I would like to call to order the Corey Valley Unified Union School District Board on April 11th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Please stand, face the American flag, and pledge allegiance to this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we need to call to roll call? I can see that everybody is.
No, we're good.
Yeah, so we're gonna skip that. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda. I'll make the motion.
Just, there's one item. Just under executive session, we do have personnel contracts, so we just needed that tonight, so.
Okay. Sorry. And that's it for additions, deletions, and changes. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next topic is general public comments. And you're up.
Great to stand somewhere.
Can you please state your names for the board?
I'm Xavier Podka.
I'm Jenna Krevert.
And I'm Dawn Sarley. I'm the student council advisor at Pulteney High School.
Great. Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you for having us.
So I'm the president of the student council at Pulteney High School. I thought it would be nice to come to one of these meetings. I've never been to one of them, see how it all works, but I also wanted to give a short, I guess, presentation, more of a report on what the student council has been doing for the students at the school, and also some things that we've been trying to get done and stuff. First, I'd like to thank Mr. DeVos. He's a great principal, a great support. He has to deal with me nagging him about moving paper towels constantly, so he's great. And Ms. Sarley for being a great advisor. And I'd like to thank all of you for your excellent work here. I've been the president for just this year, and I've been on the student council for three years. Jenna, you've been on it for two years, right?
This is my question.
Or just your first year?
Jenna's our eighth grade rep.
Nice.
So this was the first year we had elections for all six grades. Each grade has two elected members. The elections, we try to make it as simula- simulate actual elections as possible. We get voting booths from the town office, and students get ballots, and you get to choose two candidates that they want to be on the student council. It showed great interest this year. Each four out of the six elections had more than two people running, so there actually was a race. They give speeches in the library on what they want to see and what they would like to do as a student council member. We have officer positions. We have a president, a vice president, a secretary, and a treasurer. Last year, we created a constitution and bylaws, and this year, we just revised it.
And this is a very well-researched, well-discussed document that has been created by some very diligent student council members who are policy nerds.
And then, within the student council, we also have various subcommittees that work on specific goals and projects. We're trying to get a bulletin board put up, and that's one of the subcommittees we have. We have one that is tapped with creating and kind of organizing our Monday morning meetings and stuff. This year, we worked on improving lunches in the school. We had a meeting with the food services director, Kim Babcock, and now every month, after our meeting with her, every month, we now email her with student recommendations for things they'd like to see at lunch, and also some improvements they'd like to see. And this led to getting spices available for students with their lunch. I think that there still needs to be definite improvements, and I think there are still problems with the lunch, but overall, I'd definitely seen improvement. We also recently talked with the plant manager, Rich Holcomb, to discuss vandalism prevention, and, like I said, moving paper towel machines to more advantageous areas in the school for students. In terms of projects, we've worked on a food drive, a toy drive, various school dances, a school-wide movie, ice cream for the students during lunch. We also created a newsletter for the students that we do bi-weekly, as areas for them to give lunch suggestions, get a shout-out to a student or teacher, and also just write their general feedback. And we've also worked on improving our Monday morning meetings, and we did tea for the teachers one day during our staff meetings. Two of the things that I would, if I could advocate for the school board doing, I guess, one would be to have them go to schools and kind of show students what they do, what you guys do, or tell them what you do. I think a lot of students at the school, they don't necessarily know how decisions are made, and I think that causes a lot of frustrations. They kind of just assume that, like, ah, it's the principal's fault, that this is why it is. And I think if they saw the people behind, that are making, behind the scenes who are making decisions and impacting, you know, their everyday lives, I think that would make it, that would ease a lot of their frustration, and I think all of you would definitely gain some insight into the lives of the students and also some of the recommendations that they have. The also thing, the other thing that I would like to advocate for is having a student representative on the school board. I think just having a student voice during meetings would be very good and very helpful. And yeah, so those are the two things that I think I would, I would like to see. I think the best thing that the student council does is it gives voice to the students. Often, students hear from adults that their opinions matter, you know, we want to see and we want to hear those opinions, but far too often, I think we fall short of that goal. And I think this must be remedied if we want our schools to improve in productive ways and make it really better for the students at them. That's all I have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Any questions for students, the student council?
I have a question. Are you having, are you having any trouble with the third graders crashing your voting?
No.
Good deal.
How do you think, you said, "We don't hear the students." How do you think we could hear you?
Well, like I said, I think that, I mean, at least once a year, if some school board members would want to go to the inside of schools, and I know we recently had the Secretary of State give a presentation to our, just the civics classes. I think that's a great way to show, real-life civic engagement is showing what the school board does. I think that would be a valuable lesson for all of them in the civics class, and I think, I think it would, it would be beneficial for them, and I think that that would be the way that you could hear their, what they want to see and the changes they want to see. If that answers your question.
Like a Monday morning meeting, when they're all there?
I mean, alternatively, yeah, if you want to give a whole thing to the school.
I can say, I mean, I don't get to every meeting. I try to get there unless I, they invite me and Xavier says, "You need to come today." But they, it's great to, the back and forth, too, because, I mean, even like last week when Rich was there, and it's just like, you know, it, we just can't, like, you know, we just can't go to Home Depot and buy something sometimes, you know? It's like the process, and we have to do a purchase order, and, you know, and we talked about we're repairing things, and we can't buy new things, and, because you're constantly repairing things, and we do have one on hand, but if something gets, so again, it was just a good, you know, it's not just, we'll just go to the hardware store, Home Depot, and get something and fix it. It's like, it's not that easy to, you know, that type of, it's good. I mean, they ask great questions. Their meetings are run, I mean, they, point of origin, they, it's run like this meeting. It's, so I'm really proud, this is like years trying to get this.
Up and running.
Up and, well, we've had a student council but not running like it is now, so this is kind of great. There really are the, you know, and kids come to them and.
Yeah, if that's one more thing I can mention. There, I've never seen students so excited to, or, like, there's always this apathy that you see where it's, it's like, oh, well, nothing's going to get better, but there's been so many times where students have come up to me and said, "Hey, is there something we can do?" And even if we can't, even if the student council can't do it, it's so nice to hear that they care enough to want to see change, and I think that it's missing a lot nowadays.
I'll come Monday morning. When's your next one?
It's.
Twenty second.
After break?
Yep. Thank you. We really appreciate you coming.
Nice job, too.
Stick around.
Nope, they're gonna leave.
Take care.
Have a good night.
Thank you, John.
Okay, moving on to old business. Corey Valley Unified Union School District, future planning. And, you know, Chris and I spoke, and it'd be good to have a one-to-five-year plan going forward. I kind of written down some, some thoughts, and maybe it will spark some discussion. And I'll just, I'm just gonna read it to you. I would like to discuss creating unifying opportunities regarding extracurricular activities that expand students' participation throughout Corey Valley Unified Union School District. Some examples would be through our legacy sports programs and news programs, news sports programs, opportunities. We should also be creating opportunities in band clubs, maybe like a marching band, maybe a Corey Valley orchestra. STEM club. Today, when I visited Proctor, I got to see some 3D printers, and that was pretty awesome to see that in one of our high schools. Debate clubs, and maybe even, I would love to see a fly fishing club, and so on. It's endless to, it's endless what we could do to pass on enrichment programs to, to our students. If we could come together and provide our students enrichment programs, it would be an opportunity to make Corey Valley Unified Union School District stand out above our competition. The fact of the matter is that not even our, our GURCU partners want to fully commit to Corey Valley Unified Union School District, so we are left to compete for their students. However, healthy competition drives innovation and action, and I know Corey Valley Unified Union School District will rise to the occasion. It is more important than ever that we come together and make decisions about our future so that others don't make them for us. If we are successful in pulling more students from our GURCU partners, we will be able to reach closer scales of economy, driving our per-student cost lower. I would like to challenge ourselves to have some of these extracurricular activities begin by the new school year. So let's take a portion of our allotted 25 minutes for, for our old business and identify and discuss some barriers that we will have to overcome to see this opportunity come to fruition. Once identified, we can create an action plan and get through barriers. I will start with a few, but please chime in with others. You know, we've been together with Act 46 now for six years, seven, six years, and we're still, we still identify ourselves as Pulteney High School, West Rutland High School, Proctor High School. And I think that maybe we should rebrand ourselves and possibly, you know, discuss changing our names to Corey Valley, Pulteney Campus, Corey Valley, West Rutland Campus, Corey Valley, Proctor Campus. Because the fact of the matter is, is that, that we are, we already are a Corey Valley, Corey Valley, um, high school, but we just happen to have separate campuses. That would be one thing that I would bring up. Also, I'd like to, to talk about the VPA rules regarding what we're allowed to have for member-to-member exchanges. So obviously, I know football, so I know that the VPA allows 30, they allot 30 students, you know, student athletes to play football, and we're allowed 20%, so that's six other players from another school. And that's, the way I understand it, it's six, it's six other players for the whole program, so that's varsity, JV, and junior high. So there's no way for our, our varsity program to grow through our JV and our junior high. So we're really locked in. So I would like maybe to ask Chris if he would get together with our principals and our athletic directors and discuss ways that we can work around the VPA rules.
Is that the pleasure of the board? We need a motion from the board.
Would anybody like to entertain a motion?
To do what?
To, to have Chris, the principals, and the athletic directors take a look at how we can expand our, our programs outside of our individual high schools further.
They, I believe Joe Harrington and the AD from Proctor looked into that, because they were thinking of starting.
Lacrosse.
Lacrosse or golf or something, and we just don't have the kids, because right now, like, your kids that are playing basketball are doing basketball band chorus. They, everybody's doing everything, you know what I mean? You don't really have enough of kids to, if you started up this, then this dies, so, you know, you want to do, like, band, well, your baseball players are already doing the band, and your.
Right.
Soccer players are already doing the chorus, you know, they all, they're all kind of doing it. We need a lot more kids to start expanding, because if you expand too much, then all your teams suck and nobody wants to play, because getting beat every day.
It's not fun.
Isn't fun.
And I think we all already co-mingle outside of our own schools. Proctor and West Rutland are playing softball and baseball together, so kids from West Rutland go to play football, so it's not like kids from other schools don't go there. And do we do member-to-member for junior high kids? No, I didn't think so. Okay.
Yeah, if we can get more kids, that's the big thing, you know?
Okay.
Because right now, your kids are always, just don't play sports. They do the chorus and band and the, all that stuff, so.
So, so then, moving forward, we're just gonna stick with what, what we've got going on for them as far as extracurricular activities?
I think what we've done is, students have come to building Admin and said, like, that's how we started rock climbing. We had a group of kids that wanted to do that. They came, and we, you do it, like, provisionally for a year to see how many kids are, and then it goes forward. I'm sure that West Rutland and Pulteney have had other clubs, but those come from the student population, not us developing extracurricular. It's based on their desires, so.
We do, we do have, we do have other students that would like to play football from West Rutland, but we're locked in to just six kids, and Proctor has, you got, Proctor has kids that go play for Otter Valley?
Yes.
It would be nice, it would be nice, since we're all in Corey Valley, and I hope that we'll commit to Corey Valley, that, that, you know, all of our kids play, play on a team in the Corey Valley High School.
Well, I think there are exceptions. Those parents came before the, before the board, and I think, you know, that, that those things are gonna stand. I, I don't think it means that schools or communities or parents don't support Corey Valley. I think that we have been intentional in supporting families, and that's why those families perhaps go to a different place.
Hmm. That's, that, I disagree, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I also, I agree with Lisa on that, but I also think there are other underlying reasons why people are looking outside of Corey Valley. And I don't think it's because they don't feel unified, and I would, I would definitely say look into those other reasons, too, before.
So why can't we explore those reasons, then?
I don't know that those reasons would necessarily fall under, like, athletic directors needing to look into it.
Okay.
I think it would need to be explored first, and then maybe bringing them into the conversation.
How do you propose that we look, we?
I honestly don't, I don't really, I mean, we, you could have the conversation. I just, I think a lot of it does fall with the parents, though, rather than us saying as a school board, "We're gonna create this." I don't necessarily know that that is the way to approach it. I don't know that I would agree with that as a parent or as a school board member.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I just.
There might be something that we could do, though, that would, that would help the unification in, in that, for example, you know the banners that we have in our high schools for championships?
Yeah.
Why don't we have a Corey Valley banner in each school, recognizing other schools within the Corey Valley system who've been successful? So like, if Proctor wins the basketball state championship, that, that flag is put in all of our schools under the Corey Valley banner, and if Pulteney wins the football, you know, so each school, it's in our gyms, so when people come to our gyms, they say, "Oh, that's right, Proctor won that." "Oh, Pulteney won this," or "West Rutland won that." Would be a way to start in that direction with very little cost, but also giving recognition throughout the system of successes that we've had.
Well, if those two teams collided.
It happens.
And one of them got beat, they ain't gonna want to look at that banner, buddy. That is gonna twerk off every parent from whatever town and.
But brothers, brothers have faced each other, and families have faced each other.
We're not brothers, we're towns. Big difference.
But I, I think the recognition part needs to happen, because it doesn't take away. It's, it's a fact. We're not, we're not creating a fact. It's already a fact that this team won this, and this team won this, and they are part of our system, so why don't we recognize that through the system?
Okay.
I guess also my, my question to that would be, you said that we're allowed to have six.
Correct.
Okay. Do we even have any teams right now that are close to that or maxed out at that?
Yeah, we're maxed out. The football team's maxed out. Yep.
Where do you have the six?
Yeah, where do you have six?
I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead, Joseph.
Yeah, I, I just want to clarify something. Up to this point anyways, we have not had to deny anybody playing football at Pulteney. We have not had more, we've had less than six students who have wanted to play there that has not been an issue up to this point.
Okay, so.
Anybody who's been interested in playing has been able to play because of the numbers.
Okay. All right.
Now, that's up to this point. I don't know what the future will hold.
Okay, so there wasn't an agreement for just five players each because of numbers taking away from other sports? As far as soccer?
We have five kids who played football at Pulteney. There were no more than five. Nobody was denied, nobody, there was not more than five who wanted to play Pulteney, uh, play football last year.
Okay, and then, I know that when we mentioned that there's no member-to-member in regards to junior high, we, we did have Pulteney junior high kids that, that came to West Rutland to play soccer.
That's right, and that was a.
That's not member-to-member, though.
We did do that, and that was a phone call to the VPA to, to allow that to happen.
So, Joseph, is it possible for it to happen if junior high kids wanted to have an opportunity to play football in Pulteney?
It is a possi, it's a possib- possibility, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So are we limited, my question would be, are we limited to that five or six for every, for all sports encompassing, or is it five or six per sport?
No. Each, each sport has a different requirement.
Okay.
For football, it is 30. Soccer, a full complement of a team on a soccer field, I'm thinking off the top of my head right now.
Yeah, okay.
So I may not have it in a big stack, but I believe it's, you know, I don't have it in front of me, is 17, so it's 20% of 17, which is a total complement considered for soccer. So every sport has a different cutoff number. You know, again, what, what you have to be careful with is, if West Rutland did have more than six kids who wanted to go play football at Pulteney, somebody would not be allowed to do that, and you'd have to do a lottery, kind of like school choice. If you do open it up completely, then what, what you have the possibility of doing is, of course, there, there are only so many kids in the district that Pulteney, Proctor, or, or whoever may not be able to field the sport at their school that they presently have. So if I had more kids who wanted to play football, obviously, the soccer program of West Rutland would die. So, yeah, I would like to think if it came to a situation where you have two schools, one offering football and one offering soccer, that maybe it turns into a Corey Valley soccer or Corey Valley football.
Okay.
Or you destroy one program at, at any one of our schools.
Okay.
So you're able to have all schools continue to go to, to play before destroying a singular program at any one school, if you, if you get what I'm saying.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. I mean, I would like to think that would be the next step, that you, you, instead of West Rutland soccer, it's Corey Valley soccer. Instead of Pulteney football, it's Corey Valley football. That way, both programs, both football and soccer can continue to exist if you open it up.
Okay.
And I, I did ask this question to the VPA a few years ago, and they kind of scratched their heads because they didn't really know what to do with the question. We are the only district in the state that, that, that is unified, that has more than one high, that has more than one high school. So they weren't really quite sure if that was allowed or not, they, they, it was, it was new to them. You know, are we considered one high school, or are we considered three separate high schools, and would those rules still exist? Because it's new. Again, we are the only unified district in the state that, that has more than one high school. We have three.
So we're like, we're like Mill River or Otter Valley or Fair Haven, for instance, but we just have more, more campuses?
No, we have three high schools.
Or three, three high schools.
But we have three high schools as a VPA, so.
Right.
I don't think.
Okay. They don't look us, at us as a campus?
No. We are three high schools.
They look at us as three separate schools at this time.
Okay.
Yep. Everywhere in the state, legislators, the governor, VPA, all sees us as three high schools. Our communities, three high schools. And Joe, I think the question.
Even though we do share students, even though we do have, you know, Proctor kids to come, come to West Rutland for academics, and West Rutland kids have gone to Proctor for academics, we are still seen as three separate entities.
And, and Joe, I just wonder.
We are unique because we are more than one high school in a large district.
Right, and, and Joe, with academics, you know, we do have school choice. We, our students cannot just enroll in any one of our three high schools. They actually have to go through a school choice, just as they would go to, you know, Rutland High or Otter Valley or another school.
Okay.
Joe, just one last question, I, just more, just for, as we're talking about this, if we were to consider Corey Valley, that may also impact classification, correct? In terms of how the VPA would then view?
Oh, most definitely.
Yeah.
The numbers of both schools would combine and would put us in some sports in possibly a higher division. I've already, like, if we were to combine Proctor, West Rutland, Pulteney into one athletic program, we would be a, a Division II program.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I, can I go back to what, just maybe echoing what it sounded like was maybe the original sort of intent behind the, we got into the nitty-gritties of sports, but you were saying, what are, what are ways that Corey, what are other ways that Corey Valley can kind of come.
Right.
Together, and thinking in terms of a future three-to-five-year kind of plan for that? And there might be a lot of different ways to potentially do that, and I'm curious as to whether, you know, a next step might actually be having a committee of this group generate some of those ideas to bring back to the board to, as, as a sort of a next step for conversation around them, rather than kind of digging into, you know, particular, you know, nitty-gritties of, of particular things, but what's feasible, what's already been tried, right? Because it sounds like there have been things that have already been tried, and so we don't need to necessarily go through those again, but may, maybe that would be one possible way forward, because it sounds like a great, you know, a great idea.
There was other opportunities besides sports.
What are the other opportunities?
Yeah.
You know, you mentioned extracurriculars, there's a wide range of extracurriculars, you know, but, but doing some fact-finding around what's been tried, what were the barrier, you know, what were some of the barriers, as you mentioned, to what's been tried, and what are some other, what are some of the other opportunities that are out there? And then, you know, a smaller group that might explore that could bring it to the board, and we could dig in.
I, I just wanted to, to create an opportunity for discussion. Not that anything would be decided, it was just, it was just an opportunity to discuss, because, because I feel that if, if we don't figure out a way to unify, then the state's gonna figure it out for us. Is the. Is the bottom line. That's where I am with, with where things are, are standing now.
But I don't think those are the things that are changing unification, extracurriculars and sports. I mean, if you want to talk about what the state's looking at and what we're going to need to do to sustain buildings in all communities, that's an entirely different conversation. That's a conversation built around academics. That's a conversation built around reconfigurations. That has nothing to do with extracurriculars and sports. Those are all extras. Our job is education. Sports and extracurriculars are the extras. The, those are things that we add in. Academics is, is our focus.
Well, I was trying to start, start with something that maybe wasn't as controversial. Just, just to build a sense of, of unification. Because I think that there's a lot of hill digging in the ground and nobody wants to budge. And we're all circling the wagons.
We, we have in the last year done unification. I mean, we...
Can you name them for me, please?
The theater program. We've moved teachers across buildings for, for programs. We've moved, had kids common with different things that they want to do. Um, I think we've looked at anything new that comes. As an extracurricular, it says, and we agreed in our Articles of Agreement, is a Corey Valley activity. It's not for one particular high school, so...
That's what I was saying. Was part of what I was saying.
Yeah, I think that...
I thought, but maybe I came across wrong.
It's just, keep going. I think that's what, you know, we've started, let's keep going.
Yeah, like Linda said, digging a little deeper into it.
What you said.
I think there's definitely has been, like Lisa said, there's been a lot of things that have been done, maybe building on those. I do agree, though, that like sports, those kinds of things are definitely extracurriculars. I would love to see them more in our schools. Um, I think it's definitely lacking, but I don't know that that necessarily would be the starting point. But I definitely, I get where you're, where, what you're trying to do and I, I 100% agree with that.
Setting, setting sports aside, what are, what are your thoughts about, like, a STEM club?
So... It's still an extra.
Can I, I think, I understand, actually, we talk about this. I think part of our strategic plan is exactly that. We want to increase, you know, extracurricular enrichment opportunities for our students. And that's something which, you know, the, the Corey Valley admins discuss on a regular basis. And there are logistical issues behind that as well. I think one of the discussions that I think the board really is more in terms of where do we see our, where do we see the Corey Valley? Where do we see our buildings in three years or five years from now? And, you know, where, where is, you know, the future of the Corey Valley? And how are we, we're building towards that? And so I think if, if our goal really is to be fiscally responsible and to, you know, you know, to say to our taxpayers, to our, that we are providing a high quality educational service at, at, at a reasonable cost and we're still providing a wide variety of enrichment opportunities for our students, both extracurricular, we look at it from a fine arts perspective, and that at the end of this experience that our, these students have options, you know? And I think, but what does that look like? And I think that's the discussion that, I know that the Corey, Corey Valley admins, we have this on a regular basis in terms of where do we see this going? But I think the board needs to engage in that as well. And I think it's a conversation we're having with another district in our SU is just around the why. You know, what, you know, you know, or, I mean, there's change is necessary, and that's, that's, that's change is for change. But, you know, where, where are we headed? Where are we going towards? I think that's kind of where you were...
That's where I was trying to go.
Looking at, right, is just, you know, where do we see ourselves moving towards? And then what are those incremental steps? Some could be small, and I think, you know, some of these clubs, activities and some of these, you know, they said of more unified, you know, if we have a Corey Valley fly fishing team, that's another step towards a unified approach. Um, but I think there, there are some bigger items that need to be discussed. And that is really around just the, you know, as we look at, we'll talk later about facility assessments and cost. And we, we do know that Ed's spending, there's a new yield bill, yield bill that's in the House Ways and Means Committee that is pretty, pretty concerning. Now, I'll just, you know, leave it at that. It's just, you know, and...
What are they changing on? I mean, what, what is the...
It, it's still...
But I'm not understanding it, I guess.
It's...
Or they don't know yet.
Should we wait till later in the... I, I think, yeah, I think, it, it, right now, it's still a draft that's in the, it's at committee level and so, but it is, I think they're trying to figure out Ed's spending. And I always say, well intended or not, it just, it seems like we continue to complicate situation, complicate scenarios and, but there, there will be an impact. And we, we do know that over the past couple of months, we, as we look at budgets being voted down, the rhetoric is, you know, and that's being pushed, is that's, uh, schools are overspending, that we're, we're spending too much. We're doing this, that, and, you know, you're consolidation. We look at appointments that are being made around, you know, it just, you know, our, our new Secretary of Education and, you know, whether, where people stand on the, the appointment. But there are a lot of things that have to have people concerned about. And I think, you know, we as, just as a board, just have to take a look at and just say, sustainability, where do we see the Corey Valley in five years? And how do we grow and maintain it? So it's something that we are proactively moving this forward so our students and our kids, our communities benefit from this, as opposed to being reactive, letting it, you know, letting somebody else determine our fate.
I think the biggest change in the yield bill is they want to put the ballot language in, like it was there before, where you had to say you were, uh, educational spending, let's say it's 1.8% more than it was a prior year. This year, they want to set a base and then they want to include in the ballot language that your excess spending above the...
Yes.
Um, afford, so what they're doing is setting you up to fail in ballot language by, they're saying you have to do it. And they also want to incorporate the CLA and try to give you some kind of idea what it, what is going to be, which, I'm not really even sure what a ballot would look like in Corey Valley because we have three separate CLAs. So I'm not sure, and we all have to vote the same ballot. So it, it makes it interesting. But the biggest issue, I think, is how they want to determine essentially, um, they, they're looking at other states and want to tell you how much it should cost you for each student. That would be the base. And if you spend over that, you're spending excess. And they want you to record, report that out on the ballot. So you're already starting almost at a double negative if you've spent above what the state determines is what it should cost to.
Right.
And it's moving pretty fast. I mean...
They anticipate going to House, uh, for the House next week.
Yeah, House Ways and Means. And people in their own committee don't even understand what they're talking about, which is interesting when you watch them.
Right, and there's, there, there are arbitrary budget caps. And I, I know the, the budget language, I spoke with Lewis about this today, but it is very confusing. I think it would be confusing for whatever...
I think the ballot language is just like before, that, that ballot language was very negative. It confused people. Uh, today in House Ways and Means, Kornhauser said, I don't, well, what does that mean? Tell me what that means. And everyone's silent. And she was like, okay, well, then we're going to do something else. So when the people that are making the rules don't even understand what the definitions of the rules are, that's problematic to think that when you are putting a ballot behind, in front of someone, and if someone thinks you're spending more money than the state thinks you should, it, I think it's easy for them to check a no next to that.
And going back to the original discussion that Eric brought up with unification, more, you know, more unification. We use the strategic plan. We should be looking our, over our shoulder every time at how to use that strategic plan that we've developed and how we can implement it. Doesn't mean that strategic plan's going to fit exactly the same way in every school, but it really should be our, our roadmap so that, so that if we are all unelected at the next, um, at the next march, that, that the new board coming in would have a iron rod, if you will, to hold on to, to say, okay, this is the plan and this is the way to keep going. Because it tends to be in some boards where it's herky jerky. You get a new board, things change and it takes years for that to come to pass and then board change. So having that strategic plan is something we should really be using and looking at, how we can implement those things that are in there to move our schools forward, but also help us unify because we have that, you know, same vision across all our schools.
And the other thing that Tom brought up is that the community of people look at their specific community. And yes, it was very nice to do Corey Valley, but they really didn't understand that, you know, if, if in fact that was a way to, to look at the whole picture of everything, that that might mean that some changes in each community. And each community hangs on to their school as their, that's, that's us. I graduated from there. Or, you know, so trying to make changes doesn't mean we can't. It just means that you have to have that piece in all of our heads because it's not going to be easy to make those changes because of the people in the community. You have people in the community who are saying, boy, if you could bring my taxes down, I may vote for something like this. And the other people are saying, I'm never going to vote for that because I, that just means too much to me. So the whole point is to continue to have the discussion, like to bring it back again next month to say, we've all thought about this. You came up with a, maybe we need a committee. Who knows? That might be the way to do it, you know? But the thing of it is, is to keep talking about it and using what Mike said, which is the strategic plan.
The board retreat feels like, and we haven't done like, it seems like a longer retreat in the past couple of years that I've been here anyway, but that could be an opportunity to spend a day with the strategic plan, really kind of trying to hammer out a, a Corey Valley vision.
So I, I just, strategic plan is, is set. I think there's two things. So I think, you know, the strategic plan is a way that we're going to move towards. And I want to, so there's a board discussion which this is, you know, the board needs to discuss around the future Corey Valley, the five schools, you know, where we see ourselves in three to five years. That's a board discussion, that's not an admin discussion. Our, our admin discussion really is how we continue in our current format, you know, to provide high quality education, you know, experiences, opportunities for our students. If that format were, are to change based upon a board discussion, then we would pivot and adjust based upon, on that. So I think that's, you know, so, because as you remember, we spent two years with a Proctor graduate. That was, you know, the, the core competencies that really kind of defined, you know, where, where, where our students left our, you know, our schools. You know, that, you know, 12th grade here in the Corey Valley, they've been tricked out that this is the, the, the individuals we are going to be, you know, you know, I guess delivering to the world. I know that's a kind of weird way to say it, but, but, you know, passing on whatever pathway they would move towards. But, but these are like identifying characteristics in order to do this. That's where we went back to the strategic plan and like, what, what does that look like in terms of programming? What does that look like in terms of opportunities, you know, experiences? You know, like I said, I think the board has to have a, a, a big discussion, as a lot of boards do. And I know that Joe said that, that we are the only SU district in the state of Vermont that has multiple high schools. And that is not lost on individuals, you know? I mean, I've heard that being discussed across the state as they, you know, particularly as they look at Ed's, at spending, you know, all these other things. So it's just, there are discussions that, that as a board have to have like three to five years. What's the sustainability? Where do we see our schools? Where we're at? That's where that vision of that board executive, that retreat, that's a great retreat discussion for the board to engage in that three to five years. And then based upon that, we adjust strategic plan to meet those goals to, to, to help us move that way. That we support that vision of, of the board.
Right.
I mean, I do, I do...
Mr. Chair, we've spent 35 minutes on this.
Yeah, it's time to move, good point. It's time to, time to move on. It doesn't mean that we can't bring this discussion back at our next meeting. I think, I think it was good that we heard a lot of different voices.
On future planning?
Yeah.
Well, I'll say it, we got to discuss closing of a building.
Okay.
Everybody's talking about it behind each other and to, but, but we need to look at closing of a building. I don't know how you start that, how you do it, any of that stuff. But that really should be on the books, me personally.
Okay. All right. Chris, do you have anything to add to that?
No, this is a board discussion, this is not my best.
All right, so we can do it next...
Next meeting.
Yeah.
Next meeting, we'll, we'll talk more about that.
Is that going to be on the future agenda, then?
Yeah. All right. Moving on to new business. There's a parent request, F21 admission of resident student. Chris, do you want to?
So we actually have two requests. Uh, we have two families from West Rutland who are, they are moving to Rutland, but they would like to keep their children at West Rutland for the remainder of the year. And the reason why it's coming before the board is our policy, F21 state sets. Anything prior to spring break has come before the board. If it was after spring break, I could approve this. I, I would recommend that, you know, to the board that we approve both these requests, particularly, you know, just, just, you know, to, it's probably what's best for these kids is to finish off the year and then start the next school year off in their new school, a fresh start as opposed to, to move them at this time, which is a very difficult time of the year, so I...
Do we need a motion? Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that the West Rutland students stay for the rest of the year. Does, is that over?
You're approving both requests, they're...
Both requests.
Okay, perfect.
A motion has been made to approve both requests that the West Rutland students stay at their current schools for the rest of the year.
There may be a discussion?
Discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The motion was approved. The ayes have it, motion carries. Moving on to Fastbridge data presentation.
Yep, so you have all of our individual schools, do you have your pocket? I'm just going to go over some takeaways from the Proctor High School data. Um, we continue to see promising growth in our auto reading and A reading with 58% of our students making typical to aggressive growth from fall to winter and then 60% making typical to aggressive in A reading, which is that comprehensive based reading. So that's a real success for us that we continue to grow in those areas. Still have a lot of work to do in math. And we have been really focused on that, you know? Reading and writing is something that a lot of my teachers take ownership with across every teacher in the building. Math is a little bit more difficult for people to like sink their teeth into and take some ownership in a English class to do some math. And so we have been doing some schoolwide Math March Madness this last month. Um, where, and every TA, we were doing some games and stuff like that and who can own this? So, um, when we do dig into the data, we see that another thing that's come out for us is that our high achieving students, so the kids that are like in, in the high area that are college bound are not making some great growth. And we're kind of, I mean, there's some very clear reasons as to why we've been doing a lot of work and intentionally filling in the gaps for people. And those kids that are sort of already getting it, we're, we're not paying as much attention to them because of that. And so we really have to really start focusing on them as well. We spend a lot of time looking at this stuff. It is a new assessment for us. And so, and it is asking our students to do things differently. So they're trying to do math fast and we tell them, take your time, write it out, check your work. And the assessment's just not asking for that. And so it has been taking some, and I don't know if we necessarily want to do, tell kids to do math fast, right? Just for this assessment, not going to lie to you, you know? So, um, because the cap isn't asking for that and we don't want, we want the right answer, we don't want a fast answer. So, you know, I, I'll keep coming back to this, you know? It's going to be like a drum that I continue to bang about, like, we hope that we are, we hope that we're seeing improvement in math. It is important to us, we are focused on it. But this is just one snapshot for us right now.
So is this just Proctor you're talking about?
This is just for Proctor that I'm talking about.
Okay. How is, how are we doing in terms of the other schools?
They're, they're going to come up right after me.
Okay.
Yep.
Go ahead, Jen.
Do them all.
I mean, I could.
Thank you.
I will kick it to you, people, to be very...
I'll go, just because my, my building, you know, obviously supports going into her building, so. They, it sounds like they have a lot of fun up there, so I'm excited for sixth graders to grow. Um, you, yes, um, my presentation is in the packet as well. So, um, kind of building off of what Jen said and then I'll work backwards. Our sixth grade cohort is continuing to grow in math and they're showing a lot of promising growth moving towards junior high. We've done a lot of collaboration with my sixth grade math teacher in our building and the work with the junior... the work with the junior, senior high math teachers. So, we use the same program, a lot of that, so we're trying to build this momentum, so hopefully it comes out, you know, on these snapshot based assessments. Our reading for grades four and six, those two grades are expected to surpass the projected growth, so I'm feeling really good about that for them. And our grade five, who was some of the youngest to experience school closure, is doing nice, a nice job moving close to achievement. So, I feel like they're, by the time they leave us, we'll be in a stronger position to go to junior high. So, that's great for them. And our first grade cohort is just amazing anomaly, and they knock it out of the park every time, so I'm, I'm really excited to watch them go through the next handful of years. Areas of concern, you know, continuing to look at that second and third grade showing minimal growth in readings, they're showing growth, so that's something to celebrate. But I would like to see it, you know, get a little bit stronger as we go through. The teachers are very dedicated and working on classwide interventions and continuously meeting with interventionists and coaches and planning together with special educators and, so that's, that's something I know we're going to look at. Some action steps, you know, we're continuing those early literacy programs as a supervisory union and just getting teachers really acclimated with that to continue. My entire faculty did a, a reading of this year about engagement and strategies to use to teach, so they're trying to, to step back into their own to be able to help with that. And I think it's really important that specifically my MTSS team continuously reviews this data, so we have the kids that receive intervention, and we're continuously looking at where they are individually against where they were on their benchmarks. So, it's nice conversations to have. So, I'm feeling really positive about the end of the year results and seeing some even more growth than we've gotten right now.
I guess I'll go. And you also have my detailed report in your packets. What struck me this time looking at the data is that typically in the mid-year, we see the upper grades kind of dipping in reading, in reading especially, and this year they have not done that. They've shown aggressive growth, thirty-three percent actually in grades four through six have shown aggressive growth, which I saw and I was kind of, wow, what's going on? But when you look at what's being measured, it's all the things that we're addressing at the universal level in the classroom, and so I think those intervention programs that we have right now are working, so that's a really good thing. Our K-one just continues to be strong in reading. They have been historically. What I am kind of concerned, not concerned, yeah, it is, I am concerned about it, that all of our classes did not show growth in A reading, but as a school, we did. So, I've got to go in and really tease that out. And then in looking at our math, typically Pontle Elementary is higher in math than reading, and we're higher in reading than we are right now in math. So, my plan is, we're going to, we work as a team, our interventionists do professional development for math and reading. I'm going to flip them so that we have more interventionists working with the upper grades in math and vice versa. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's it. I am.
Again, uh, yes, you have my report in there as well. I had to double check our numbers because like across the board, we were like fifty-nine percent, and I was like, is that, like, I'm, did I put the same graphs in there? But it was just, it was fifty, you know, it was different numbers to get to fifty-nine, but that's what it was. Our seventh grade did grow, showed growth in all areas from fall to winter, and we saw significant growth in auto reading by our ninth graders, as well as an increase in math for that ninth grade group. Some concerns, our eighth graders didn't do as well as expected in both auto reading and math, and we had a huge discrepancy with our ninth graders with A reading and auto reading. Our A reading scores weren't as high as the auto reading scores were on there, and some, you know, what we're looking at, and this is our first year with interventionist, and we're still, you know, they're looking at the data, they're changing groups with the fall, the winter data, trying to see, you know, hitting those kids that really, where can we get our biggest bang for the buck with that? We're trying to find ways to, with some of the high school and middle school kids, how to take these assessments seriously. Our interventionists did a great job of kind of doing a little video of, this is how to take, I mean, a lot of it is, it's not, some of these tests are not just your knowledge, but how to take the test and, you know, just kind of like one of them, you get forty questions, and if you don't get all forty, that's okay. You know, if you get twenty-five out of twenty-five, that's what they're really looking for. You don't, and some of the kids like, oh my God, I have two minutes left, I have to answer ten more questions, and they kind of rush through that. So, little things like that. We kind of, our teachers took the test to, you know, we can take practice tests, and the teachers took, so they can kind of see where the kids are going at. Our math teachers had a great discussion, not just ours, but the Corey Valley, at, at the, the middle school math teachers at our in-service in March, and I happened to walk in on their discussion of, kind of like, how are we, looking at the curriculum, like, realign, like, what is taught when? Just to kind of, you know, sometimes the tests have something in the winter, and it's like, you know, we take these tests in February, and it's like, whoa, wait a minute, we're teaching that stuff in April, so do we swap that around or something like that? So, it's not, you know, those type of things. So, and, and we're starting, you know, we did, we have a foundations classes that we're working seven, eight, nine this year, you know, we're looking at those, like, what can we do for next year to kind of realign those and help with some of those kids that need the most help, so. Jay?
Good evening, everybody. Couple of things that we saw in West Rutland, as a whole, math actually continues to be an area that our students make consistent growth across the board. That, that has always been a strength of our school. We have seen steady growth in auto reading and some growth in early reading, and so holistically, I like what I see at the, at the younger grades. Couple of areas of concern, we're struggling at the K-one level to show some consistent growth over time. Last year, we just started foundations, and this year, we're piloting U-Fly. I'm hoping that once we get some consistency in programming, that we'll be able to continue to see some growth. I, I know our teachers are, are standing on their heads, trying to follow through with programming and really move our students, and they're, they're doing a great job. And again, this is, this is an assessment. It's, it's a, it's a check mark to see how their growth is doing. Not to, not to, to be a dubbie downer on a grade, but our seventh graders did not show a lot of growth, in fact, they did not show growth in auto reading or in A math. That is a concern that I saw this year, and it's not for lack of a lot of work by the adults and a lot of kids, but we've just, we didn't do well. So, what do we do? Just like Joe and some of the other buildings, our teachers actually, after the winter assessment, took the Fastbridge assessment. It led to a very healthy faculty meeting conversation. I'm sorry, there's a duplicate that I said in my report, but we had each teacher take two tests, and that led to that healthy discussion and also talking to the kids about how to take these tests. And that's something that Joe Devanas just mentioned as well, not just necessarily your knowledge, but it's also how you take it and some of these strategies. So, we've been spending a lot of time on that. And one of the things that we do is, we're also doing data reviews. Our EST teams at both the elementary and the secondary level are looking at the data, working with the interventionists. I'd like to think that by the time we get to spring, we're going to see some good growth. That's what we want to see across the board for all the grade levels, and that as anything else, when students get used to the format and continue to, you know, understand the minutia of taking these Fastbridge assessments, that we're going to continue to see some growth. So, you know, obviously some areas that have been great and some areas that are concerning. So, I can answer any questions that you might have, but overall, there's highs, there's lows. It's a new assessment, and I think the students and the staff are taking these actually quite seriously.
It sounds like a really good accept, good assessment, and that it's nice to see in April, principals excited, you know, when you're tired, to see something like that, and that you know where you're at with your kids. I mean, that's huge. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Moving on to item C, community use of school facilities. Tom, do you want to talk to AAU?
Yeah. What do we charge somebody to rent our gym?
So, our, the form, uh, right now, it says a hundred dollars a day, and then it's thirty dollars an hour for custodial. So, that is what's current procedure, the procedural form. So, if the board would like us to reconsider, then we could discuss it.
Yeah, the thing is, like, not the, like, each community should be able to use that no charge period, but time to like AAU teams, I drew up a thing, if you had sixty teams, at five hundred a team, that's thirty thousand. Then if you had six on a team, that's three hundred and sixty kids, two with each kid, that's seven twenty. It's twenty-five dollars to get in, so the seven twenty by twenty-five is eighteen thousand. That's forty-eight thousand this guy running, or girl running the AAU tournaments getting. And they say, well, we got to pay for refs. Well, that's not counting your concession stand or the fifty-fifty raffle, which is huge. So, you got somebody making forty-eight grand using our stuff, and it costs more than that to run a gym for two days nonstop, you know? So, West Rutland or Proctor or Pontle shouldn't flip the bills so these guys can, you know? And then this past weekend, there was a team, there was ninety-three teams in an AAU tournament. That comes up to seventy-four thousand at the end of the ballgame. So, you know, and we're only charging, you know, so, I mean, that's up to the board, but if we charge a thousand a day and they pay for the janitor, and if they say no, well, then it didn't cost us any money. Right now, it's costing us money to let something that big come through our gyms.
So, can I just?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the schools can run concessions at these things? The, the, so-
No, AAU takes over.
No, this, so Caston ran this last one.
Yeah.
And I went to all of them because my kids were in it. Saw some West Rutland teams, Cavaliers. And some of them don't, don't have concessions, some, you can choose, you can tell them, we're going to run concessions at our school, and so the school can determine what that does. And you're paying, so for the example this weekend, it was twelve dollars for a bracelet that got you into all the games at any of the facilities. And, and I think what happens is, if you decide to raise it, they'll just pass that on to the consumer, so.
But they can pass it on to the consumer, but what I'm saying is, the town of West Rutland or Proctor or Pontle shouldn't be fronting the tab for their, you know? If they don't rent it, then we don't, we shouldn't be losing money so somebody can have a big tournament and make money, is my, and I'm, like, community, I don't, not really the community, like I say, if a West Rutland or, you know, they're using their gym, they should be free. I mean, that's part of the ballgame.
You don't charge our AAU teams to practice or anything.
No, you shouldn't, because it's, if it's their, yeah, if it's their town, you shouldn't, but.
You're talking commercial.
What's that?
You're talking commercial use.
You're talking for, you're for profit.
I'm just somebody making a pile of money that's costing our town.
Commercial use.
And if they don't rent it, okay, so we didn't lose money this weekend, is what I'm-
I guess I'm, I'm wondering where you're getting the, we've lost money on it, though.
Because we charge whatever, a hundred dollars a day? A gym costs more than a hundred dollars a day to run. When you send people through there-
And then there is a place on the form, you can, you charge thirty dollars an hour for however many minutes. There's a place on the form, so like when we do ours, because I know they do garbage, I put in a cost that my maintenance facility director has told me, like, this is how much it's going to cost us for garbage removal.
Yeah, okay, but a hundred dollars, that doesn't cover the toilets for the day in anybody's gym, you know? And I'm, like I say, if it comes to the kids in that town, no, they shouldn't pay, but when these big tournaments are coming to town, it shouldn't cost us money to let them make a pile of cash, you know? And it might have been twelve dollars for that, but there's a lot of them, other people put on that are a lot.
They're, they are expensive. I, I do see it as servicing our, you know, like I know Proctor has three AAU teams, West Rutland, from what I saw, had three.
Oh, and I'm not saying not let them, but they also do traveling too.
Right, but you can't, like the, like Caston, for example, they put on three in this area. They can't not charge West Rutland's teams, the, the three hundred dollars to get into that tournament, but charge Hartford's teams.
Why can't they?
Why can't they?
I'm looking up for, and I don't, don't take this the wrong way, I don't, I don't care about, shouldn't say it that way, but Fairhaven, Hartford, Burlington, is West Rutland, Proctor, Pontle. That's what I'm looking for. This is an expense to us, and we're looking to, you know, we're always looking for cash, so.
Do we know what it costs to run the, run a gym? Like tax, water, you know, that?
I don't know offhand. I think we could talk with our-
Facility when you do that?
We could talk with our facilities director. I don't know offhand, the, the-
Yeah.
Data cost to run, like the heat and lights for, right. I'd have to see what that would look like, but, I mean, I, we could add this information for the, you know, may board me, if you would like, I just have a ballpark.
Yeah, just a rough idea, because like, it's costing us money.
And I, I understand exactly what, what you're saying. I think that, from the board's perspective, I think just, you know, would you like us to explore other fee structures? And, you know, we have a flat fee that, you know, if, or is this, I think, so just ask the board what the-
I think we could explore that after we knew what expenses were.
Sure.
I wonder if Joe knows, like, locally, through other, other districts, what they're charging?
Yeah, it's all pretty similar, give or take a little bit here and there. And I'm not sure everybody does charge, but looking at some of the other schools, I think we're all about the same.
Joe, I know in the past, I know that you had, I think there's a tournament or some agreement where your kids then were able to attend, like Caston, a basketball camp, your boys and girls teams free of charge, like a week's-
Right, there was, I don't, I can't remember, it was like the team camp or something like that, we let them use our gym, but they didn't charge us. It was like a three hundred dollar fee.
That's a different, oh, correct.
Yeah, so we kind of said, you know, you can use our gym, but our kid, you know, and that was kind of just the-
Exactly.
The wash.
That's-
Right.
Everybody's getting it now. I'm just saying, somebody comes in and makes a pile of cash, and then, you know, that's what I'm saying. You need to, you know?
Yeah, it's a good discussion.
Need to play a ballgame with every other school too, because somebody's making a killing, and we're paying for it.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, I would just say the same thing. When the Caston did their team camp, they let us, our, you know, five hundred dollar costing, let us join for free for the use of the gym, same as Pontle.
Okay, and they did the same for Proctor, so, okay.
Yeah.
Do we have, have to have a motion for you to gather expenses, Chris?
The board, I mean, you don't need a motion, you could, the board could just ask if, if you'd like to sit in the discussion.
Outside fields also. Same kind of, I don't know how to, how you do that, that's, you know, if people are using your field, if it's not your kids, what do you charge?
I, I know, like, in, in Pontle, we have, like, a Pop Warner football team.
That's, yeah, but you wouldn't charge for that.
Right, but there, there is some discussions to have around them. One being, we had, our, our elementary school in Pontle was, they're having soccer games and football practice is going on at the same time, so the coaches are blowing their whistles. The kids are playing soccer, are stopping because they heard a whistle. So, so we're not allowing our Corey Valley kids to have an opportunity to enjoy, enjoy their soccer sport because they're getting disrupted, and the Pontle's coach, Pontle elementary's coach went and asked nicely for them to please not blow their whistles during games, and they just kind of blew them off.
I've been there for the games, and I have not experienced that whatsoever.
Ever. Never.
This is what the coach-
And, and like, I'm not trying to, so, my husband is one of the coaches.
Right.
You know that. Yeah, and you did. I don't know, and we know a lot of the board members, very close to them, I don't know that they've ever come over and talked. I would encourage them to reach out to the board and ask them about that. But I do know that it's been kind of like, only like a fifteen minute overlap.
Yeah, it's not a big overlap.
But I don't, I can't speak to, I don't know that they have, I don't know, yes or no, if they did that, but.
I mean, that's what I was told by the coach, so I have to bring, I wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, absolutely, but I would just encourage them to maybe go to the-
I was also told that, that they were practicing on our high school soccer field and that that was pretty tore up.
Who's practicing on it?
So, so I think what we can do is, because I don't, I don't think we really want to get specific. So I think the biggest things around the community use of facilities, I think just we can look at, what I'll do is, I know we meet with the Corey Valibens, you know, twice a month. I think at our next, I mean, after, I mean, after spring break, we can kind of talk about this and get, gather some information just about, you know, cost, you know, a lot, like to, to heat a gym for one day and other costs and else, just impacts. If, you know, just whether it be having a reseed or.
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
Just whatever, we could just take a look at that and just have some information, so.
Yeah.
And I think we'll look at it just more holistically as opposed to specific examples.
Is there a use form that they have to fill out anyway?
There is a use form that there is.
So whoever's looking at that should be able to say, wait a minute, you're going to have to start fifteen minutes later because we have this going on because this is a priority. So maybe we need to just refine that a little.
I mean, I, I'm a football guy. I love football, but if someone comes to me and has a concern.
You have to share.
Then, and I can play in the sandbox nice. And they're, they're also, building administrators are, you know, that's part of their, to manage the use of facilities. So as they look at, before they sign up a form, they should see, okay, if we're double booking or if there's an overlap, handling that. That's where the, the building ministers should be handling if there's any sort of conflicts on, on purposes, so, okay.
Good. All right. All right, moving on to item D, AOE facility condition assessment.
All right, so in your, in the board resource folder, there's actually a separate folder that has the five facilities, condition assessments for each of our schools. So just a brief overview, so it was part of Act Seventy-two. There are two primary purposes around Act Seventy-two. First was just to help the state as well as the General Assembly get a better understanding of just the, the true cost of school construction. And I know that I, I heard maybe a week or so ago that in terms of the age of facilities, that Vermont is the second oldest in the United States in terms of the overall, you know, age of our facilities. And so when we look at this and we've heard, you know, talk about this around school construction, particularly with Burlington High School, that kind of really kickstarted this whole discussion statewide. It was just a lot of facilities are aging out at the same time. And so the work of the boards, as we, you know, maintaining facilities, operating facilities, upkeep of facilities, is really getting a better understanding in terms of what, what the task is for us, but also the state and the General Assembly kind of looking overall, you know, what is the total cost? And so they had this assessment that all schools went, you know, had done and they collected this information. What it's, the, the purpose for us as a board is really to use this in addition to other data that we may have to build out a five-year capital improvement plan for our, for our facilities. What I would recommend to the board is that you allow myself, building administrators and our facilities directors to work together and at the August Board meeting, present a five-year, a, a draft of a five-year capital improvement plan that takes, you know, the, the assessment as well as other items that are, you know, data points that the facilities director may have. And we'll bring that to the board, you know, to discuss and review as, particularly as we start looking at budgeting. We look at year one through year five and we can kind of pour through all this if, if the board is okay with that, so.
There's a lot. There's a lot of data in those, this is like seventy pages each one. I'm one of those people that read them all and it's, it's actually pretty mind blowing.
I would be careful reading too, because these are the first ones, not the corrected ones.
So when will the corrected ones?
I, I wouldn't hold our breath on corrected ones coming, to be honest, so I think it's.
Well, they, they said today in the webinar that the AOE plans to put these up on the website in two months for the public to have. So with the misinformation, just in some of ours, to think that that's going to be up for public purview, it's like creating a negative arena in my mind. The fact that the people that came and did the assessments couldn't disseminate between a high school and an elementary school, that they didn't check the report when they put the information in, that information is the same for two buildings, is pretty disappointing. Because I'm sure the state paid a good chunk of change for this. I certainly hope that when we start to really look and do a data dive, that we have corrected versions because the numbers are not accurate. The information is not accurate. There are multiple errors for all the buildings in, in these reports. And the fact that in the webinar today, the AOE and people that were a part of this do not want to recognize that is pretty disappointing in my mind and are still going forward. I mean, th- this is literally like putting out New York Post data for the public to take in, in my opinion.
I mean, I, I see these sort of things all the time in my business and they're, they're designed to scare, scare you.
It's not scare, you have to have, at least have.
Well, it is as far as like what you're looking at for money to be spent for upkeep.
It, it's not even the right, the buildings aren't even correct.
Right, right. They said that we had two, 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 two high schools. So, so I, I, I've met with all the admins about this. Myself and Louis met with everyone about this already. We, we understand the, the inaccuracies, the errors. We've actually submitted those back to the state over a month, months ago and we have yet to hear back. So we understand that as we're working through the development of five-year plan, this is something that we will refer to. This is not where, you know, like I said, we have other data points in each of our buildings around, you know, year one, year two, year three, year, you know, up to year five. So this will be something we just refer to. It's not going to be just everything that's, and I know, so, and if we, we do get corrected plans, we'll go through. But you're right, that is something that we have to publicly discuss, even that draft is, is this really something that we need to address or is this inaccurate? And I think that's something as a board.
Well, once it goes on to the AOE and it's a dashboard, people are going to go in and start looking and then they're going to have these crazy ideas. And when, when the numbers are wrong, when things haven't been updated, when you have two schools that have the same information, when, I mean, it's just the misinformation is just atrocious. So perhaps it would be helpful for this board if we received what was submitted as corrections. So at least we have that information when we're in, you know, in August, when we're looking and talking about things, so.
Do you know if, because I looked at the site map for West Rutland School and it looked like they included the town garage on that property. Did you look at that map there? Did you notice, was that a correction that you looked at?
That, that was one of the things we, we did send back to them, yes. There, there are issues with property lines. I know I talked with other super tenants as well, so, yeah. Yeah, and, and the numbers, Lisa, you are correct that when we went to the webinars last, I don't know, last spring about this, that was one of the biggest concerns, where, where did they get these numbers from? You know, just, it seemed like some of them were just pulled off the air, just kind of just.
And that's what they said today in the webinar from AOE. They said, oh, these numbers don't really mean anything. Don't, don't buy anything into them. They were just numbers that had to be plugged in.
Right, but it, but, but when they say that, but it's also those numbers are informing some other discussions somewhere.
Because they said for, because for state construction, that, those are things you're going to have to do. You're going to have to have the one to five-year plan built out on this. They have this entire criteria now, if you're going to apply for state aid, which some of the criteria is just about housing stock, about zoning regulations, that these boards have no oversight for. But you're going to have to meet those criteria to apply for, for that, so.
Okay. Moving on to consent agenda. Approval, approval of the minutes from March fourteenth to twenty twenty-four.
I'll make the motion.
You'll make the motion, great. We have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes from March fourteenth to twenty twenty-four. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it, motion carries. Item B, approval of the warrants. I would like to entertain a motion to approve warrant number four-four-nine.
I'll make the motion.
Mike's made the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The motion is, was approved. The ayes have it. Now moving on to B, superintendent's report.
So no, we have listed these as information only. It's been a short time, so I, I will be very brief. So there are just two items I wanted to quickly discuss. One is just around, from the legislative piece, there are discussions around the PCB, H eight seventy-three and about what that, if they, if that would pass, what that pause would mean for our schools. That pause would not mean anything for our schools. Really, the pause would be for any school that has not yet been tested. So our schools here in Corey Valley have all been tested. We are actually looking, going through mitigation and mediation. We're actually looking at abatement in, in some of our schools and get that set up for the summer. So that would not impact us at all. So we will continue to move forward with PCB program. So we'll continue to keep you updated on that as well. So when you hear that, it's not impacting us in any way. The snow day, I just want to quickly touch upon this, so the building administrators can touch upon, based on this. It's a unique year. Obviously, two snow days happen to be on, two parent-teacher conference days. And I know it's very frustrating, you know, I, I know that I make, the kids all love it, you know, that, you know, parents not so much. But it, it's a unique circumstance, particularly when we have, have a half-day for teachers, that we can't do a delayed opening because of just the way, you know, it's not a full day of work. And so we have to really just close and then with our CBA or our teacher's master agreement, it does state that when we have to close for weather-related, then we close for, for everyone. So we have to close for conferences. And so it's, it's a unique circumstance. I know I spoke with the association, we're looking at maybe in the future, you know, work on some language that might change that. I know that the last conference, the weather was kind of iffy as throughout the, you know, throughout the day in some of our communities, others not so much. But I think if, if we find a way to, to still make that work, because I know that conferences are very important. You know, parents getting a lot of good feedback, you know, teachers looking forward to that, students looking forward to that. We do, you know, I spoke with the admin group this past week. We do have some plans for makeup conferences and I think, you know, I can, if I'm allowed, I'll stop. I can quickly just let them go around and quickly explain what that looks like, if that's okay. And that'll be coming out also, I think, end of the week as well in your newsletters, correct? So if that's, are there any questions on my reports? Okay, all right, because a lot of this was, you know, I read to that, so. Joe, you just want to, you just, anything else you want to highlight and then talk about your snow day?
Okay, so just real quick, to follow up from last month's meeting, you asked about why Puerto Rico. It is because of, the kids don't need passports to go there and that was one of the reasons, just one less thing that, so that's why it was Puerto Rico instead of like Costa Rica. Just like I said, everything else in the report, just one other thing. Hopefully it'll be in the Herald tomorrow, if not Saturday. We had three students that took first place in the Vermont History Day and will be heading down to Maryland in June to, at Nationals, Sabrina Kraus, Emma Boyer and Abby Rose. And they did a Brown versus Board of Education was their project and they, the reporter from the Herald interviewed them this morning and I just checked and it's already up on the website. So it's kind of cool that, but great job on them, so proud of them for that.
And your conference?
Oh, our conference, sorry. Our conferences are going to be Wednesday, May eighth and then the tenth, we're all doing it the tenth in the afternoon, but our staff decided to do May eighth.
Yeah, and, and May tenth is already a half-day for students, so there's no disruption for anyone. So it's already scheduled, so, so all schools will be doing May tenth, but.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
So Polton Elementary's conferences will be made up May first from three to six and then the tenth from twelve to three. I would like to kind of piggyback on the Vermont History Day. I didn't know if you were going to share it or not, so. I would like to just let the board know and the public know that Mr. Harrington was the Vermont History Day coach. And it's the nineteenth year in a row that students from either Polton High or Polton Elementary have qualified for Nationals. So it's very proud of them all. And I also want to just recognize that Mr. Harrington was named the Patricia Bering National History Day Teacher of the Year for Vermont. And in June, he will be eligible for a national award. That's pretty cool.
Yeah, nice.
He is a great teacher. He's had my, my son, yep.
I can go. Our parent-teacher conferences will be on May first and then the tenth. I'll just put in another plug for Legally Blonde Junior coming up. It is on April twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. We have students from Rutland Town, West Rutland and both of the Proctors. It was open to everyone and I do know that sometimes transportation is an issue. We did have one Polton student and then it just, with sports became too much. But we look forward to putting on more G R C S U productions.
Nice.
I'll go next. We are also doing a play. Now, our first grade students are actually presenting a play at the end of the school year and I will get you the date for the May Board meeting. Watched them rehearse today, it was really actually very cute. They are all singing and I just was amazed because I couldn't imagine doing that at six and seven years old. But other things to highlight, you know, we're wrapping up testing. Kids are really putting in all the effort. I think we have, we have one more assessment after break, but they're ready for spring. Lots of shorts are already out, lots of happiness running around. We had Spirit Week this week, so a lot of Proctor pride today and lots of fun things, lots of field trips and stuff coming up in May, so I'll put that in the board report as well. We are going to, the staff decided they wanted to do May eighth, so we will do our conferences from three to six on May eighth. And that went out today to families.
And May tenth.
Yes, and May tenth.
All right, I'll hop in next. Our makeups for parent-teacher conferences will be again, May tenth, but also April twenty-fourth, the week we get back from vacation. Couple of things, I wanted to give big shout-outs to Lucas Laflamme and Saral Venter, who are sixth graders at West Rutland. They finished in the top fifteen of the state spelling bee, so we're very proud of them, going up against kids up to, up to eighth grade. We've also been celebrating Autism Awareness Month in the school, so that's been a wonderful kind of grassroots effort that we've been doing. And our Destination Imagination team ended up qualifying to go to Nationals. And so I put in the specifics of how they did, but this just happened in the last two weeks. They are, I am looking for board approval to give them permission to travel to Nationals in Kansas City, Missouri in May. And that is only pending if they could raise the money. They are about halfway there as of yesterday, I believe. It was about six thousand dollars and they are working. And if they do not spend the money, they have a contingency plan to pay it forward for future endeavors. So I would be asking the board for approval for the Destination Imagination team to travel to Kansas City, Missouri in May.
So moved?
So motion's been made to travel to, I'm sorry.
To allow.
Kansas City, Missouri.
Kansas City, Missouri in May?
Yes.
Okay.
If they have the money.
If they have the money. But they're, but they're halfway there.
Yes.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it, motion carries.
I have one follow-up from last month. I, I mentioned last month that the electrical system that runs our building is from the nineteen seventies. And that was something that was actually cited in the maintenance report that you had for our building. Some of it was upgraded in the nineteen ninety-six edition. We ended up bringing in some electricians who all looked at this. This is a, a very big scope job. And what we were asked to get by the electrical contractors was a specific specs from an electrical engineer. So I worked with Louis to make sure because there's costs associated with that. And today I had an electrical engineer who actually did work in our building back for the nineteen ninety-six edition. Come into the building and take a look and he is going to draw up a scope of work for that electrical work that needs to be done. Again, just a quick refresher, this is a, from the early seventies, Atlantic Federal is the name of the company. They are out of business. It is considered to be extremely archaic. And in some states, those buildings that have Atlantic Federal or Federal Atlantic, whatever it's called, panel boxes cannot even get insurance. So we are, and it was also cited by the electrical engineer that this was something that was brought up in nineteen ninety-six. 1996, that he saw this as a concern back then. So here we are, my math's a little rusty, but 20, something, 28 years, 26 years later, 28 years later, we're still talking about an issue that probably should have been addressed a few decades ago.
Nob and tube, Jay. Nob and tube.
You remember that, right?
I remember nob and tube. Yeah.
So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It'll be, I'll, one day, one day of that information, I will bring it back to the board and be talking to Louis and Chris about this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead. I forgot, in my board report, I scrolled back down. If you'd really like to make a fun day in Proctor on April 27th, you can come to the color run. That starts at 10:00 in the morning and then you can hop on over, be done in time to go to Legally Blonde. So our color run is to raise money for our playground that we're trying to purchase. So...
And if you don't want to do a run, you can do a dash, which is a great, very quick. Right? For the littles, for the ones who don't want to do five miles.
No. We're going to have food, food truck, all of that. So it could be a great fun day in Proctor.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I didn't realize that we'd skipped out of the superintendent's report right to the...
Principal, so we can pass right over, I think?
Well, something I need to bring up from the superintendent's report, and that's just to make sure that you understand that the healthcare plan was extended for two years.
Okay.
The object of that was to work collaboratively with VI and the teachers' union to look for ways to streamline and hopefully reduce costs in that. So it's not just a deferral. There's, should be some work that's going on during that period of time.
Okay. Anything, anything else before we move on? Item D, GRCSU board meeting report. Can, will one of our nominees kind of just go over what happened at our last meeting?
Oh. Okay, let me think. I gave you the minutes. Let me see if I can find my minutes of the meeting.
Anything you gave it to?
Yeah.
GRCSU, right?
Yeah. We did, we did a lot of the same things that you heard today. They were more specific about, like the, the reports that you gave about where we are in math and language arts. Okay. We did a VSBA report.
There's a discussion about carousel meetings.
Oh, we talked about doing a carousel meeting in terms of to have everybody here in one spot when you're, when you're gathering together. And was it in March?
So the discussion that was around, and was looking at next year, around Fast Bridge or, you know, the three times we present information, would it make sense for us to meet as one large group? We, you know, the SU, kind of, you know, an explanation, got an overview from SU. And then we will then break off into our separate districts and to discuss where we're at locally. So for, for SU board members, it's, you know, kind of condenses for those three months into one meeting night. Logistically, I still, you know, don't really know how that would look, but I think it was just, it was a consensus to be discussed. And I do believe it's something that we're going to be brought back to local boards just for continued discussion. So, I don't know if Lisa or Mike or Linda, if you want to...
And we discussed having a board retreat. The same things about what, you know, open positions and contract. So it was, I can't see anything that would be...
Okay.
Yeah. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to monthly financials. Louis?
Louis is not.
Louis is not here, so...
If there are any questions, they can just email Louis.
Okay. All right. Moving on to personnel action. Contract recommendations. Thank you.
Chair, this might be an opportunity for the clerk to read those off for you.
What was that?
You want to read?
Shall I? Would you like me to read? I can, if you would like me to.
Sure.
All right. All right. So, for professional staff, FY25 new and rehires. Contessa Perry, Polton Elementary teacher. Sarah Lambert, West Rutland School teacher. Cassandra Kozmala Ski, West Rutland School teacher. Beth Winter, Polton High School teacher. Alan White, West Rutland School teacher. Keith Hill, Proctor High School teacher, sorry, P-H-S. Nora Richter, Proctor High School teacher. And Megan Cornaglia, Proctor Elementary School teacher, with all apologies for any mispronunciations. FY25 bargaining unit teacher contract salaries. Julia J. Feikez?
Fix.
Fix, thank you. Proctor High School teacher, horizontal move. Emily Brooks, West Rutland School clinician, horizontal move. And then for informational purposes only, support staff Carl Sarani, West Rutland School custodian substitute. Extracurricular, current FY24 Beth Winter, Polton High School summer music teacher. And FY25 Beth Winter, Polton High School summer music teacher.
Do I have a, entertain a motion to approve the contract, contract recommendations?
Make the motion.
Mike made a motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. The ayes have it. Moving on to resignations. Would the clerk like to read those?
Most certainly. Resignations. Courtney Elliott, Proctor Elementary School teacher, effective June 30th, 2024. Arlen Bloodworth, Proctor High School receptionist, effective June 30th, 2024. Matthew Lanfair, West Rutland Facilities Director, effective April 12th, 2024. Samuel Rogers, Polton Elementary School teacher, effective June 30th, 2024.
Do I have, I'd like to entertain a motion regarding the resignations. Would anybody like to entertain a motion regarding resignation?
I'll make the motion.
Mike's made a motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to policies. Sarah, do you want to go over policies?
Sure. I mean, I...
Or is that how we normally do it?
I think what we've done in the past is just to kind of put them up for, as a group. There's several first-read policies. So if anyone has questions or comments, we can direct them to members of the policy committee.
Okay. Okay. Are there any questions? So moving on to general public comments. Are there anybody virtually?
Well, don't we need a motion to say that we've accepted the first reads?
We do, yeah. And the rescinding ones.
Right, and for the rescind. So the rescinded ones are ones that are out of date or the VSBA is pulling back. So those are, so, but I think we can do them as a group. So as a group, we can approve.
So I'll make a motion to accept E10, E13, E16, F18, and G1. No. Yes, as first reads.
Okay. A motion has been made to accept E10, E13, E16, F18, G1, B2, E2.
No, we, those are separate.
Those are separate. Okay.
Yeah.
Two G1?
Through G1.
Through G1, first reads. For first reads. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion for B2, E2, and F10 to be rescinded.
A motion has been made for E2, excuse me, B2, E2, and F10 to be rescinded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Now moving on to general, general public comments. Is there anybody? I don't see anybody. Tammy? Fulcom?
Hi there. I was just wondering, what is the status of the athletic director that's going to be replacing Dave in the fall? Have interviews been done? Has anybody been hired?
So Tammy, we're currently looking at that structure and what the next steps will be. So we should have answer for that shortly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the future meeting date. I'd like to entertain a motion for our future meeting date to be on May 9th, 2024. Would someone like?
You don't need a motion for that.
A motion has been made by Mike. Discussion?
You don't need a motion for that.
Don't need a motion?
That's informational.
Informational.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
My apologies. Item 13, future agenda items.
I'd like to add class reconfiguration. If we're going to talk about building closure, I think it's also important to talk about that.
And we have that form that we got where we had kids in different classes, if we had that in the past, so we could bring that forward again.
So that includes the population?
Yeah. Where they are, where the kids are.
So, so it's been said in the past that we already have that data?
Yes, we can bring it back.
You can bring it?
Yeah, it's in the board...
Is it current?
We'll make sure it's current.
Okay. Now we're, we're into executive session.
We have a motion.
Okay.
Need a motion to go into executive session. I'll make a motion to go into executive session for, what's the?
Personnel and contracts.
That's 744.
So a motion has been made. All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And will we return to, you're going to have a break, a 10-minute break? So a 15-minute break to clean up?
Yes.
Yeah, I think 10 minutes would be good.
10 minutes?
Yeah. And then will we return into this link after?
Okay.